Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, August 16th, special council, uh, special work session of the City of Miller Beach, um, called Order. Please join me with the influential leaders.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the high of the United States of America, and to the Republic, to which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the role.
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swob.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
For the record, please let it be known that, uh, Councilmembers Swob is here in telephone. All right, item number one is, um, something that I put on, is to discuss the State Code Section 2-63, addressing the city council, and it's the discussion of the city code ordinance in section 2-63. Um, this is a discussion, you are volleying, Robert's overboard, but there's a little bit more back and forth than, um, we're not quite as formal, so for the folks in the audience, we typically, as part of a work session, do not have all on citizen input. I'm gonna ask if the council would entertain citizen input, we always have. Anyone objecting to that? There's no objections that we'll have citizen input on this, so at some point, we'll ask for comments. We're not voting on anything tonight, the best we'll do is a consensus, the rules of the state of Florida doesn't allow us to vote on anything in a work session. This is more, we don't get a chance to speak with each other on the outside under the law, this is our chance to speak with each other, but it has to be done in front of the citizens. So, the item that we have here is the, um, is our code ordinances. Right now, the way it stands, section 2-63 says that the presiding officer or on request of the city attorney shall rule out of order any discussion by the city council of matters that are the subject of any current or prospective litigation. And I've got a problem with this, really since it's brought to my attention by Fred Riley, and it's come into play a few times recently. We're not gonna discuss lawsuits here, we're gonna discuss this law. And this law actually, um, creates some problems for us. City Manager Fred Riley and myself had a brief discussion of this the other day, and Fred Riley actually did a proposed new section. One of the problems that we have with this is that it conflicts with the state law. The state law allows us to have sunshine meetings, and in the event that there's a lawsuit, we're allowed to, not sunshine, shade meetings, out of the sunshine. We actually would go into the conference room, or dismiss the folks that are in this room, and have a meeting to discuss strategy, or settlement possibilities with regards to the lawsuit. Now, of course, we don't have to do that in a public, we shouldn't do that in a public. The government has allowed us to do that privately. You have to bring the court reporter in when that happens, you have to report what's happening, and at the conclusion of the lawsuit, that becomes our settlement, that becomes public information. Right now, if we read this thing, we can't do it. Problem is, we all did this a couple months ago, okay? So I guess everybody in council and in the city has an issue. We did it, but I don't know that our law, the way it stands, is legal right now, and that's a discussion I had with Mr. Riley. The other problem that it gives us right now is that when you have a proposed lawsuit, a notice of lawsuit, state of Florida says, when you're gonna sue the city, you must give a six-month advance notice to the city, and our city charter also says that you must give advance notice to the city. Right now, the city manager would get that, or I would get that letter, the city manager gets that letter, and that's it. We're not allowed to discuss it. So we're losing the opportunity to possibly settle maybe a nuisance suit, or some suit that shouldn't ever get brought to court, early, because we're not allowed to talk about it. And the problem with talking about it is obviously, we wanna be careful as city council members, not to say something that's gonna hurt the city's position, but by the same token, we're hurting our own position, and literally forcing every single lawsuit to basically go to a trial, or go to actually be filed. I'll give you an example, this is totally hypothetical, somebody falls, they break their leg, there's no question about it, you wanna get rid of the lawsuit. Right now, we gotta stand with nothing we can do about that, or maybe the insurance company might settle it, but us as a council can't come back and say, "Let's press this thing and get rid of it." We also stopped, this is a real situation, this suit was just recently settled, but we had this look and fall at Morgan Park, and the letter of the lawsuit was very, very detailed, and, um, there was all kinds of stuff in there about drainage and stuff like this, and I could talk to the city manager a little bit about it, but we couldn't talk in public about it, and you're allowed to make remedial measures, even during lawsuits, and you can't use against, so we don't have a chance to counsel. So, this is an attempt to try and fix this law a little bit, make it a little bit better. Mr. Riley, I wanna just go to you, and then I'll open it up to the council for the discussion, but I know you, you know, you helped write this thing, make different proposals, and talked about it a bit, so I'll turn it over to you, and then we'll go to council discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to just comment or question to our city attorney. Are we in line with the section 2, yes, disagreeing with our state law?
Section 2-63D is, is the provision, the provision, as it's written now, addresses prospective and current litigation, and technically, you could make the argument that the current, or the existing city code provision is slightly inconsistent with state law, because state law, 768.28 subsection 8, provides for a shade meeting, and the, you could argue that the current city code does not, uh, consider, or does not acknowledge that that's possible. So, that, that's an argument. I, I would say it is inconsistent. In the past, you had a shade meeting, you had one recently regarding a, uh, personal injury case, so if you were going to make a change, then the, the change would be to acknowledge that there is a, um, shade meeting allowed under 768.28 subsection 8.
Yeah, but when the city's being sued, it's turned over to our insurance company, they should be the ones, you know, directing this and controlling this, not the city council, correct?
That's, you have insurance, and if it's that type of claim, then they would be handling the claim, and typically what happens is, they do an initial assessment of the claim, and if the claim is, um, has enough merit, they will, um, from an insurance standpoint, they would appoint claims counsel to defend the city in that action. What the, the current code does not take into account is, there may be a situation, and I'm, I'm making a hypothetical, if the, uh, city was owed, uh, $500 from a vendor who overcharged, and the city was trying to recoup the $500, then if, if the vendor refused to pay it back, then at some point, you'd have to consider whether the, the city council was gonna authorize a case to pursue the $500 being refunded to the city. That is not really allowed under the current council. Uh, the city manager could certainly have that discussion with city attorney, but it would be something that would, according to your current code, would be out of order under the current rules.
So, that when we were addressing the fines against people that had orthic, since we were out of line with our city code and ortho here, is that what you're saying? Because it was discussed during a meeting, and that, I said, "Here's the amount we will done, and here's the amount we will pay." So, basically, we've been, you know, in this rule all along, to the way I'm understanding this conversation.
Oh, I don't, the, the state law authorizes you to do what you did in having that shade meeting, and that, that has a very strict, um, protocol that you have to follow, and that, that protocol was, was followed. The, this is a, for a perspective in the future, this is a code change, is the way that the mayor has brought it forward, and it's something that he, he's thinking that in going forward in the future, that city council should consider a code change.
Riley, I wanna add, you gave the example of a, of the city trying to get some money back on a contract, is one that the insurance company will come in. I'll give you another one, um, I'm not gonna use an actual example, I'll make this one up. Let's say our city council decided that, you woke up one morning, and we decided we're gonna ban bicycles in the city. No more bicycles, that's it, we're done. Now, somebody says, "You know what? Your law is unconstitutional." Okay? Or, "I have a problem with that law." Insurance company can't settle that case, and the reason why the insurance company can't settle our cases is because we, as the council, are the only people who would be able to repeal that law, or change that law. Now, they may be able to settle the damages, they may be able to, under our present policy, withdraw legal fees, they may not pay for you to defend that law, they think it's ridiculous, but in terms of doing it, they cannot tell our council, "You have to repeal that law." So there's an example where our council needs to be able to meet, to be able to discuss it, to hash it out, because we may say, "You know what? We don't want the embarrassment of being known as that city that bans bicycles, so we don't wanna, we don't wanna go down that road. Let's just repeal the law, or maybe we'll modify the law, we'll ban them on Sundays or something, you know? That's what we can do." And if we don't have that ability to talk about this, and haven't gotten a shade meeting, really, you know, what we do? Threaten lawsuit, not on a shade meeting at that point in time. By making the changes that we proposed here, it allows us to discuss that and head off what could be very expensive and/or embarrassing litigation. So, it's for our benefit, and let it only be done with the warning that you, as city attorney, would provide us, which essentially is, if we're talking on open minds, it's all labor recorded, it's all public, watch what you say. Now, we could go out and hold a press conference in the parking lot, or what, and talk to the media, and do whatever we want, but while there is some control, in a limited public forum, you know, we can watch what the city council says, or just give a reminder to the city council, "Watch what they say." And that's what I believe you wrote in there.
Well, I, has, has that been circulated to everybody? Okay. And, um, can't pull up my emails, so I can't, can't read it, but the, the thing that I wrote today, that, and, and for the record, I, this was a, I think, 29-minute task, and I am not charging the city for it, because I told them and Mayor Manzo last week that I would write it, so you had something specific in front of you, and I'm not charged for it, and I'm okay with that, so don't ever bring that one up again either. What I said is, the, the city council, the current rule will remain, except that the council, um, may discuss litigation in accordance with section 768.28, for statute, so that, that's providing that you, you hold the, the discussion consistent with the shade meeting, and then the second sentence is, "The city council may discuss prospective litigation, provided that the city attorney, uh, first advised the city council concerning admission against interest and other legal safeguards." So, there, there may be times, if I'm sitting here, um, someday that will not be the case, but whoever is, the city attorney will inevitably say, "You have to be concerned about admissions against interest, and you have to be concerned about other potential, uh, things that could be said, and, and give you some safeguards." It largely depends, to me, on what, what kind of situation you're going to be discussing. So, to me, that, that's a good, uh, provision, and it's something that, that I think you could consider.
Listen.
Um, I totally agree with this proposed new subsection 263D. I think it covers all the bases that we need to cover, and I would, um, suggest that we put this on the September meeting, is it the next one?
September.
To, to amend 263D, and it does, like I said, provides for shade meetings, and then it provides for prospective litigation, and it's a very good proposal.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, I saw, revealed the last statement that you were working on a, uh, pending resolution. Would this, would this change or allow that resolution to be legal?
Well, I'm going to choose my words carefully, um, that the, the resolution that was, I was asked to prepare, I prepared, I, for, uh, ran the resolution through the ethical rule that I have to apply, and I recommended that the resolution be considered. So that's a very clinical explanation of what I did, and the, I think it was absolutely sound, because the resolution would have conflicted with the, in my opinion, with the current city code provision.
Would that code, uh, happen to have been section 2-63D?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can I say something about that? I think mine is, hopefully, would as much care. Um, that was my resolution, I stand on my resolution, I made the chance to make that resolution, it was obvious. I violated myself in significant, uh, this discussion, probably about 15 minutes, I would say, for confusion of different members that were here for it. And, this was a compromise for me, so for those of you who think on tuckers nails, and all of these, cause trouble, and it's a compromise. I believe I have every right to ultimately make that motion, and I could fight if I really wanted to make that motion, but I'm not here to make that. I'm not, I don't believe that you can stop an elected official from speaking out in a public forum, when you allow the citizens to speak on that same issue. And when the reason that's given, this declaration against interest, which essentially is save the city liability, I don't think that's compelling state interest that justifies the infringement of an elected official's speech. If I wanted to, I'd probably make this into a major issue. And telling her down, I don't want to. Okay? I'm compromised, I still would like to make that motion, and I still believe it would be completely legal, and if anybody would challenge it, it would lead to a major problem. But the interest in peace, which is what I'm hearing, from our council, from compassion, I just saw on a blog, of somebody, um, I'm before willing to achieve on that, but I don't think I'm doing anything. This is my compromise, Leslie Notaro's another attorney, she likes it, that means a lot to me, right? I think we nailed it, in terms of what has to happen here, I mean, this should change for the legal city, and I'm not gonna take it any further, I'm not gonna push it, and I'm saying that publicly, okay? I said it before, I punched up that I'm not gonna sue the city, I'm telling you right now, if you stay with this, I'm not gonna sue it. This is my compromise, my attempt to make some peace in this city, because if we keep this up, folks, things will change in March, but several laws might be on the outside looking at these meetings, so this is my attempt to start the ball with me, and I just saw something you were gonna say, that they're in the outside mode, and I was impressed with it, and we've changed from discussion, okay? And I think that's really, says a lot. So, we're moving, moving forward, we can talk, we're moving forward, we can do it, we're good people. So that's where I stand. I like it just the way it is, Fred, I don't want any other changes, I'm not taking any action on that motion, quite frankly, on that resolution, quite frankly. I appreciate it, if you don't have any more discussion on it, like I said, when I said I'm forgetting, so I'll come up. Mr. Riley.
The, uh, the shade meeting discussions makes a lot of sense to me, and I know questions are common to that. A discussion in public, though, I, I do have to remark, this is because all volumes in the world, the city attorney, may not disway in utterance or admission against interest, I mean, that's, initially, that was what all that was for, and it seems like experience with some other stuff going on, it's, it's the one that, that we keep receiving, is discussing. So, again, shade meeting, that's a, that's a no-brainer, that makes a lot of sense to me, and if that brings us in line, fine, but again, the most conservative response in a situation with people like this would be, you don't have any discussion in a public forum. If it's a debate, have a meeting, just provisions for a shade meeting.
Well, the, uh, you're, you're absolutely on point. The most conservative way of doing it is exactly what you said. The, the problem with the, the doing the shade meeting is, it has to be current litigation. It cannot be, we got a letter that's threatening litigation, and the case has to actually be filed, and it's not, it's lawsuit in a court, or it could be an administrative proceeding, but it, the, the proceeding has to be ongoing and active, that's the, the requirement of state law, so, you know, if you were going to choose the most conservative way of modifying 2-63D, you wouldn't add the second sentence, you'd stop with the first. I'll, I'll add one more comment. In discussing this with Mayor and Lynn, one of the things that, that I, uh, stressed was, make, make the, if you're going to revise it, make it consistent, so it's consistent with the Florida statute, that, that is what you're doing. You're, you're making a thousand percent clear with relation to the Florida statute. I did not go into the much more complicated aspect of the constitutional law issues. I'm not dismissing them, I'm not diminishing them at all, but those are things, although I consider stuff like that, you have a far more accessible way of doing it, that still achieves the same result. So that, that was one of the things I, uh, discussed in our conversation before we got to this point. I also discussed it from the standpoint of, y'all's procedure in the past has been discussed changes to the code, that they're going to be initiated by the city council, discuss them at a workshop, don't start out at the city council meeting, so that was another thing we, we talked about, and that's, that's what we have done.
Just something for the council to think about, is, and we can look at other councils as our mild, as our yardstick for this, um, you have to be very careful, anytime you're telling an elected official that they can't say something, particularly in a forum like this, where we permit free speech, providing you adhere to the rules. Now, what are our rules? Our rules are rules of decorum, you know, you can't come up here and start swearing and do all kinds of stuff, but saying what you wanna say here, as long as you just say it appropriately. The problem that, you know, if you get into this discussion, and you start chipping away at what those city officials can say, I think you're gonna run into a problem, at least from my perspective, I can see that becoming a problem. I think this works, and it allows you to cover both things, a shade meeting allows you to cover existing litigation, and the, an informal discussion, or a work session discussion, or a council discussion, allows you to cover threatened litigation, maybe head it off before it becomes ugly. I think we all would heed the warning of the city attorney, saying, "Watch what you say." Particularly, you know, let's say the, accidentally, I'm walking out tonight, and I knock somebody over in the hallway, I accidentally threw it, okay, I know, I better watch what I say about the acts. But, I mean, we get sometimes into a situation, you know, we had something the other week, where I was just asking if we had money set aside in the budget, we're not discussing the case, folks, okay? So we, we have certain things that we need to know, whether we're budgeting for, or something like that, those are peripheral discussions. We start getting into the nitty-gritty, now, I, I don't think we should be doing that in the open, and, uh, people, one other thought, um, you don't have to ever speak on this stuff if you don't feel comfortable, you know? The city attorney is gonna say, "Speak, but be careful." If you don't, if you think you might say something you don't want to, don't say anything. No one forces anyone to talk to you, so that's up to you if you wish to do it, and if you do it, be careful with what you say, so we go to the city. Fair enough, just the way it is, I'm talking with it. Do you have other comment? And Glenn, are you, is that, are you satisfied with the way it is, do you have it to move it?
I'm, 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 She heard what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
You got here, Lynn.
You're not in the actual, you're not in the actual code provisions, you're in the recitals.
The recital, the whereas on page, I see it, it's, yeah, she's right.
Is it number ears? Do you see what I'm doing?
Yeah, I see it. Last, Fred, page one, the whereas, then it looks like it repeated, the little, little ruminal one, and then number two seems to iterate some of that and questions, why are we doing that?
The one I looked at doesn't matter that way.
Okay.
As far as the.
That's why I'm struggling to track you.
Don't worry about it.
No, I mean, you know what? He can have my, I mean, he can have my copy of the law or whatever, he can talk to you with this, and I just, I'll just go underline in blue with a question mark. I think, I'm not sure why it's duplicated, there might be a reason, but I don't see it now that Wes brings it up. Anybody else? They only got page two and play two, and on page one, two? Page three? Clean. You came on page three, anybody? Page four?
Again, another, shall I see typo in section F? Home to over one thousand five hundred and sixty people, and we changed it on page two to be one thousand six point five.
Got that right? Fred, I didn't check these all against the comprehensive plan, I assume you got them exactly from the comprehensive plan, correct? All the items that you added? Just want to make sure. Go to five and six, everyone? Page seven. Everybody's good, still. Page eight. Page nine. A lot of definitions. Fred, these definitions are really good, they're very comprehensive, were these from another sign ordinance, where it was said, combination from other cities or?
Combination of other cities, and, and there are several of the terms that are defined elsewhere in the city code.
Did you do the artwork?
I didn't do the artwork.
I just did, yeah. Okay. Eight, nine, ten, any questions on those? Page eleven. Thirteen.
I did do the artwork on twelve.
You did that? Page thirteen were good? I have to say, when I looked at that artwork, I was thinking something else on first quick glance, Fred, I'm glad it says for a good car, and that's good. Page fifteen? Twenty? You have some comment here. Fred, good putting that the city councils under eighty-six dash sixty-three-two, it says, the city council should debate the appropriate side of a construction sign where they are in the district, so that's up to the graphics at this point. And I guess, I'll just bring it up now, because I saw this, I mean, it comes up on the next page, but we have temporary signs, we have, this isn't about the size, but it's placed it, it's fifteen feet from the road, and on page twenty-third, three, you have political signs that are nine feet from the road, so I'm just not sure why all the difference, and maybe there's reasons behind it, or I'm just not sure why you did it. It almost makes it a code nightmare, I don't know how the city management feels about that, but it seems to me to be pretty difficult to remember all of that stuff, so I don't know if we want to take one. Simply with the size, and then we kind of go with two by threes or three by fives or whatever, so it doesn't matter much to me, I don't own a construction company, but, you know, those guys do like to use a bigger sign, but they shouldn't be any bigger than a politician's sign or someone else, that's what I feel.
Are you asking a question?
No, I'm just, I mean, I'm kind of asking a question, stating something, I mean, we have some differences with sign placements and sign size, I just think that, and my initial objection when we did the review was, why does a guy building a house get more to say than the guy running for office? You know, and you should have the same size, really, so that's just my two cents, it's, I don't know if there's any official rule on it, but it just seems fair that, you know, again, I say, you know, so and so construction, I mean, we're running the city, we should have, get our message out.
Well, the, the underpinning of the whole thing is that this, this is a residential community, you don't have commercial, this is not a commercial corridor like US nineteen, where you have all sorts of signs for businesses, and the, the underpinning of what I tried to do in revising this is to put the aesthetics of the community is the paramount standard that you're trying to achieve. So, a lot of the stuff, especially the front end of the ordinance is oriented towards making clear what is the basis for you to do the actual regulation that you're doing. So, this, this whole issue, and I think this is, will be most of the things y'all want to debate, is you, you have to decide as the city council, what, what is the appropriate parameters that you should put in for, to achieve the aesthetics of the community that you're, you have here, and that's, that's up to you to decide. You, you know, I would just use an extreme example, you're not going to say the sign has to be, you know, three inches by three inches, because that wouldn't be much of a sign, nobody would ever see it. But you, you also don't want to go to the other end of the spectrum where the, the sign is a hundred feet by a hundred feet, that doesn't fit either. So, you're somewhere in between, and that's for y'all to decide.
For political, on page twenty-five, we made the political sign two foot by three foot. And I don't think any, everyone here has run and put out signs, and I don't think anybody's going to have much of a problem with that. Some people have went bigger, not people on this council, but some referendums and other individuals who have run for some of the higher offices have put some of these fairly nice sized signs out there which are bigger than this. I don't have a problem with two by three, I think it's, I mean, I don't have a problem with three by five here, so, I mean, we just have to pick it as a council, there's no right or wrong, but I think whatever we pick, we're kind of, I guess my feeling, this is strictly made now, okay? Whatever you limit a politician to, you limit the construction of that to, the cool guy. A cool guy shouldn't have more rights than, you know, no one should have more rights than an expert, and certainly not more than a political, political type speech. Ron? This is a work session, so this is not a debate.
Well, I think, I think it's a good idea for ease to make it all unified, like the, the amount of distance from the curb or whatever should all be the same, that way, I think that would make it a lot less confusing. Oh, is it political sign, is it a construction sign? Okay, that one's fifteen, well, that one's nine, let me get my ruler. I just think if they're all the same, that would make it easier for code, and then I agree, maybe we should just make them one uniform height, that way, nobody has a huge barbarous sign hanging out of my chuala versus a tiny one. So, I'm just saying, just keep it uniform, that way it just makes this easier to enforce.
But you know what, like some of the signs, the bigger, you know, if you're building a big house, they'll put up usually so and so construction, is that like a three by five maybe, or a, how big are, they're, they're bigger than the average sign, so what are they usually do?
Yeah, they're, they're probably three by five, you might listen four by sixes or three by sixes, because they're more of a, construction signs in a lot of cases are more vertical than they are this way. And you still have the, Fred, the, the real estate signs, because that's already established for a bunch, so that may be a different sign, well, that would be a different sign.
Here's what I'm thinking, if you read it and help us out as a realtor, okay, three by five, does that pretty much cover the maximums that everybody wants to go? I mean, you don't have to do the three by five, here's, if you're running and you want to do those little yard signs, they're two by three, turn to all you want, you're good, you don't have to do the three by five, we'll let you do the three by five. I think it covers most of the real estate signs, I think it covers most of the construction signs. I've seen bigger, but in our city, it's up to this council, pick a number, I mean, you could say three by six, I mean, whatever we want, though, let everybody pretty much get the same sign then, nobody gets bigger, nobody gets smaller, three by five seems like it, should be able to get your message on that. I got mine on two by three, that's fine.
But the only question I would want you to think about is, we allow somebody to have an open house, and right now, they use the small two by three signs, you really want a bunch of three by five or something, so I think you have to differentiate a little bit, because you don't want that, where if every street had an open house, you got a three by five sign going down through the whole school. Well, that's the plan.
We have something special for open houses too, right? Don't we have a special, I think you're special?
They can put, they can put, currently, they can put a sign at the end of the street for an open house, and they can put a sign in the yard. They can only put one.
One on each, one on each end of the street, and one, you still keep your regular real estate sign, you don't have to go and pull in and out.
Unless you're a corner lot, then you can put one on each side.
Two by three for the open house, and a regular up to a three by five for you? I don't think you can use two by five for a regular estate.
I'd like to see the signs all one size. Guy comes in and cuts your tree down, wants to put a sign up, it appetizes business, I don't want to, I don't like signs at all. I asked Mr. Riley a while ago when we were doing this, is there a way we can make people to have sign established in your yard for more than two weeks, have a permit? Like, if, if I want to put a sign in my yard, and I'm going to live there for two weeks, that's fine, but some of these signs, they sit in the yards, they rot, I know there's garbage in there for, you know, you can't read them and everything like that, but if you're going to have a sign in your yard for more than two weeks, it gets a little bit tiresome or whatever, get a permit, if we can put permit language in there, I believe that restricts free speech, and every month, you apply for a permit. I think it keeps the neighborhood a little bit cleaner too.
Well, I'll segregate out political signs. Political signs, you have a time period when you can start and a time period when it ends, so it's a defined period of time, and the, the other ones, you, as it, as it's written now, you don't have a defined time period, it is simply, you know, what you're typically looking at is, is a house for sale, that type of sign, they're, I, I'm, I'm not that receptive to the permitting, the answer to it is, can you do it? Yeah, I think you, you could do it, but I, I would be a little bit wary about doing it that way. I mean, you're, aesthetically, you, you can define a not to exceed area, and that, that to me is a really good restriction to rein things in, to keep in mind the aesthetics, but I, I'm, something just sticks with me that the, putting that kind of limitation would, I think, give you some real problems at some point. If it's something you want me to, to look at further, I can.
I don't know if we have enough support from this council to have a, like I said, you get your message out, how long does it take to get your message out? Just like a political sign, why is it no way certain at a time?
Well, because political signs are the expression of your First Amendment rights, and those are.
Why can't I put out one on for whatever, leave it in my yard forever, you know?
I mean, did I, we have people with, you know, signs for somebody running for twenty twenty-four, person hasn't even declared for twenty twenty-four for president, and they're all over the street, and, you know, and I support that person that way, but I'm not going to put a sign in my front yard for twenty twenty-four election, and I'm with Frank, but I think, you know, that's where we were trying to say, how, what can you do in terms of when you cut this thing, because you can keep your, your comfort sign in your yard too, I mean, it just, they never.
That's my point, yeah, I mean, that's, that's my point, I mean, it just trashes up the neighborhood.
I, I think you covered that here, I mean, I, I think you covered it best you can, so.
I think I covered it too, but if y'all have something that you want to look at further, this is the time to, to raise it and to consider it.
If this council feels a permit might be a benefit to the sign ordinance, I think you should look at it, it doesn't matter.
I think, I'm with Fred, I think you're having a problem with a permit, just from a constitutional thing, because somebody's going to say, you're using that as a way, you know, if you had a good reason for a permit, example, let's say, we did a code inspection, and the code officer comes out and inspects, and you could say, you know, kind of like what we do with our beach stickers, okay, we're charged five dollars for the inspection, that makes sense, but if we're just using it, I understand the reason, I understand exactly what they're shooting for, but I just think that from a constitutional thing, people are saying, you know, even though it's five dollars in your yard, and say, oh, here's my five, they'll say, you don't have to pay to do this, it's our property.
Well, I, I'd start from a different angle, and I'm not talking angles, I'm just saying a different perspective. If, if you're looking at a sign where somebody's trying to sell their house, if it sells within the first week, then, and the con, the deal closes, then the signs are moved, and it may be replaced with a sold by sign for a very short period of time, but practically, the sign's not going to be there forever. But if somebody puts a sign in their, their yard and the house does not sell, then two weeks from now or a month from now, they're still going to want passersby to see that their house is for sale, and that's, you know, to me, that's practically a good thing that they can continue to use it. There, the, I'll pick another category, a construction sign, if some of these construction companies there puts up the sign that they're building this home, that's typically going to be for, my guess would be less than six months. No?
Up to two years.
Okay, well, it could be up to two years, but, you know, I mean, if it's two years, I hope it's a very extravagant home, but. Yeah, practically, you, you, to me, you need to take into account the, what the citizens are trying to do with putting the sign there in the first place, and what purpose is it, and is it a reasonable purpose that they're trying to achieve, and I, I would say, if the sign's there, because they're trying to sell their house, that, that's, you know, I would suggest to you, I would be careful about restricting too sharply their ability to sell their home.
I was talking, just signs in general, I understand where, I understand where you're coming.
Well, the, the good thing is, because you don't have commercial, you're not getting the clutter that goes with commercial signs. If you were having a commercial, a commercial corridor, you'd have to have a whole, you know, set of provisions related to the commercial signs, because those are typically the electric signs, the blinking signs, the, you know, video signs, all that stuff, you're not dealing with any of that.
Send us one, we got to get it, sure, because we're going to move it forward as we get out of town. Folks, this is twelve feet, that was what was in this originally, again, I, I'm just asking for some consistency, but they don't all have to be the same, as we don't want to do that, but we have to decide, we need to let them know what to put in here. So, right now, temporary signs, say on page two, they shall not exceed twelve square feet, so that's a four by three. I could live with that. I just could ask the same thing when we get to political, Fred, that's going to, you know, so, but are we all good with that?
So, the four by three, that includes any construction type signs?
I'm not sure, do we have construction separate there, or not? I think that, yeah, if that's a construction sign, yes. if that's a construction sign, yes. And temporary, so it's good non-political.
Okay, so whenever someone's, when someone buys a property and then they work out a deal with a contractor, generally, the contractor comes in with a nice shiny sign that's showing off the home that they're about to build, and letting the neighbors know that, hey, this guy's actually doing something with his empty lot or his old house. I see a need for that sign to be larger, but I don't see the need for a 24-square-foot political sign. I think, I think there should be some different education between those. Also, going back to the permitting, I think that those types of signs, the instruction signs, basically, they should be given a certain amount of time in our code that's covered with the approved permitting for that work being done. So you issue a permit, you issue your permit signed, or a signed permit, and it's only good for so long. And that way, they get their message across, hey, we're getting a new roof, hey, we're building a new house, and then it times out and it goes away. The only thing that I caution, the only reservations I have on that is that who is going to be issuing these permits and maintaining them? It sounds like a lot of overhead for the city to keep up with all the signs, because construction is going on all over, all over the city constantly, on every street. So how, Mr. Reeves, how would you manage that?
I don't, the current staff, you couldn't manage that. It's, you know, we, we have a pre-permit process for, you know, construction, like if they're hitting a roof, they come in, get a pre-permit, and then they take it to the county. But to try to manage it on every single sign, and I recollect that there is something in the code already, but I don't have time to look here, but about the, like, the time, the, as an example, somebody gets a new roof, there's a limit, you know, there's something...
Line of theory, I was going to let Dave know, it actually says, that the sign shall be removed immediately upon completion of construction, or in case of a subdivision, if you don't have the sign, shall be removed upon completion of sale.
I think these are a little bit different. Those are little tiny signs in their temporary. They're, they kind of remind me of the, whenever the lawns are sprayed for insects, things like that. I'm talking about the ones that are going to be there for a while. I'm wondering if really, the code officer, as he's riding around, whenever he sees one of these types of signs, maybe it's not in our best interest that he just marks a date on it, or a date whenever...
Well, if it's, if it's construction of a new home, that home construction by our code says 18 months, you can give them a six-month extension. So technically, that sign could be there 24 months if it's a new one.
And you know it's going to be on the ground, blown into the water, down the street.
Well, I would say most of them, trying to keep those up, because they want the advertisement. Now, you're talking about the house on 25th Street for the new construction sign, that's under the magistrate's rule now, code enforcement. That is two-plus years, but he's under code magistrate funding. But most of the contractors, when we go to do their CO, all that stuff is gone. You know, they would try to get it out of theirs, because they want their CO.
So what you're saying is, that's not really a major target, I don't...
No.
Okay.
The bigger things are getting the, you know, the little signs in the yard, because the project can be over. I'll give you an example, there's one on Gulf Boulevard, the roof's on, everything's done, the sign is still there today. But they just finished up, I think it was Friday, so, but they left it a couple days after.
What do we do with the multiple signs? When you build these bigger houses, you get, Dave said, the main construction guy, he'll put his sign there, but then you get, like, the top guy, then you get the next guy. I mean, they, there's like, way more than one sign right here, and they're way bigger than, you know, everybody puts a fancy sign, and the smaller guys, you know, the guy that seals the papers, he may just have a little, I'll call him a campaign sign, a little two by three, but some of the other ones, the specialty guys, they, you get a number of signs out there, and it becomes like a billboard almost. I, it doesn't bother me, it really doesn't. I mean, the only point, I guess, I'm a different feeling to it, is that I just think that I'm really proud that there's a new house going up, and I'm glad that it's helping our values and making the city beautiful. But whatever we let a construction guy do, I think you have to at least let a political person have that same right. I don't think political people are going to put up 100, you know, six-foot, 10-foot signs, because, I don't know, you're going to need a lot of funding if they're going to do that. But I just, it just doesn't sit with me, right, that the construction guy has a chance to say, you know, his message in a bigger form than a political person, that's, you know, that's probably more than more sacred than free speech, right? That's why, that's why I said it.
Why don't we just compromise, instead of 12 square feet, make 15, and that would be a three by five, which should be enough to be able to, for a construction. I mean, Frank, you can say that's good enough for a construction, and then more than adequate for political. And just make it uniform. I'm just thinking to make it easier for code, that way they don't have to think about other dimensions.
If you look up at the ceiling above you, where that light is, and if you took those two squares, and then other two squares, and then those two cut-off squares, one by eight, that's like a three by five or a four by five? That's a, that's a pretty big sign. So I think, yeah, I mean, I think that covers it. That'll take care of your construction guy. I mean, if you want to print up all of the signs, that big, an election, that's fun, you won't get a lot of contributors. It hasn't been a problem either. I mean, people have just done it, even though we have a restriction on smaller signs, so we really haven't bothered people. Um, three by five? Dave, Robin, you good? Fred, Clint, Peter? Your 15 feet, right, so that'll be three by five, 15 feet total. Page 63, A2, that's what goes for 12 to 16. Page 20, anything else on 20? On 21, we have the same thing with the sign, with the size, I guess it's the same number, right? Fred, that should be the same number? On...
I would say...
Yes, right.
Or number two, change it from 12 to 15.
About the 16?
15.
15, I'm sorry. You all good with that? I'm sorry, no, so 15 it is, Fred? Fred, placement here, and I'll ask this to the city manager, maybe, I don't know why. So down here, on the bottom of 21, we have temporary signs should be placed not less than 15 feet from the edge of the street, and not in public, right of way or usement. Okay, that's fine. Then, if you go two pages later, page 23, for open house signs, across the body, I think they're nine feet. Yeah, they're nine feet. Is there, like, and then, you know, so like, is there a reason why we have the different things for different signs? Oh, and then, political signs on 25 are seven and a half feet, it looks like. So I'm just wondering why. If there's a good reason, we'll put it along.
They, Linna, the same thing, we need to, one, be out of the right of way, so that has to be the first parameter, and then beyond that, it's what, what do you want?
I agree with the right of way, I mean, is there a reason why one is better than the other, or could they all, could these all be the same, or do they have to be different? Just trying to keep it simple. One of these, we're talking about is the complexity of our code. Here we have a 29-page sign ordinance, sign ordinance, you know, that's a lot.
I think keeping them out of the right of way, but the right of ways change all over the city. And so, as an example, in Bellevue State, they've got a big right of way. The right of way, probably on Eighth Street, is probably 10 feet, roughly.
I mean, typically, what we, I mean, what we did on the election, and I think we did this with your pretty much approval, was, says seven and a half feet, step seven and a half feet back from, from a valley curb, and you stuck your sign. For me, it was three cases, that took care of it. Now, I think technically, it might be in the right of way, but like you said, you could go around the city and take up every sign if you do that, because if you put it too far back, you won't even see them. But yet, you don't want it too close, that you block people's line of sight for traffic. I mean, I think seven and a half feet, nine feet off of the curb line, and it's good, but that's just from my personal experience, so I don't, you know, your city manager, you tell us what the right line of sight should be, line of sight should be, and we'll standardize it, we should, or if you want to leave them all different, we can leave them all different.
Let me just get some clarity, but seven and a half feet is what we always use for political signs.
Okay.
You know, even though the, the right of way may be different, but technically, they're supposed to be out of the right of way.
And I think if you do that, you're not blocking anyone's line of sight down the street, right? You know, by the time you're seven and a half, nine feet in, you're not doing it. The problem is, of course, you know that, you know, you may place them properly, but a landscaper or a worker will come along and move them, because he's got the lawn, and he just, he doesn't know the law, so he just sticks them down. I mean, that's one of those things that, I know we have a thing in here where we can actually pick up the sign, but if we, I would urge our code person to just reposition it, you know, because chances are it's just somebody put it in the wrong spot.
I would say, again, for simplicity, make it all uniform, so if you wanted to, I mean, seven and a half feet, kind of decimal points are kind of silly on this, I mean, make it eight feet, make it 10, whatever you decide, but just make it all the same. But definitely out of the right of way. So what would you say the longest right of way is, like 10?
14 or 15, if you...
Is that, you know, I mean, like, okay, so Robin, Robin runs there, you're 15, right? Well, I don't know, Robin, well, either of you, you said was eight feet, nine feet, if I'm, sorry, you're not blocking anything, right?
And honestly, I think if it was, like, my neighbor had a bush that was kind of blocking, and I told them, and they cut it down, so I think in that situation, the neighbor would leave the sign out of the right of way, but I'm assuming, so it doesn't bother me, I would say just make it standard, and not halves, just whole numbers. Whatever you guys want.
Eight feet.
Is eight feet reasonable?
It's reasonable. Everybody? One, two, eight feet.
So is it going to be eight feet from the edge of the street, or eight feet from the edge of the curb?
The curb, curb line. Or the edge of the side, what about, what about where we have sidewalk, I felt a little more, eight feet from the sidewalk down, right?
I think we use back of the curb down there.
Oh, we do, okay. Yeah, just a sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, sidewalk's five feet, you probably got two feet in between the sidewalk. They put it basically what we use, just behind the sidewalk.
Lynn, if you need to change this, I don't think this is going to get not voted on, because you may get nine. So if you go back tonight or tomorrow, and you say, you know, that really should be nine, or, does anybody have an objection if we give them a quarter two to play with here? So we're recommending eight, if it comes in at nine, we're not bringing this back to session, so we'll vote on. You all good with that? Yep? That's page 20. 21, Fred, you had a comment in here about how you got this language. This is the Supreme Court language, this is fine. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's perfect. This is the best way to define something that would be an offensive-type sign, and I don't think you need to go any further than that.
On page 22...
22 now, sorry, yeah, there was nothing else on. We covered, we covered the standardization with 2021, unless anybody had anything else? No. 22, Fred had comments about how he came up with what an offensive sign, harmful to minors, and this is a hornet's nest, but I think you can talk with this. This is Supreme Court language, and...
This is, sorry, the statute.
How hard is that, too?
This is...
It's still Supreme Court language, if you're interested in all that, leave it alone, unless somebody has something better. Okay, anybody? Fred, you had another comment on item two, says, "The city council should debate parameters for temporary signs for events and provide direction." Not sure what you're looking for from us.
Well, this is a point you raised about, shouldn't we be doing something related to signs for events and, for events, like a birthday party, for instance? So...
I would say still do the 15, and hopefully the birthday party wouldn't last that long,
and can we say, I mean, the same thing like what we said, when the event's over, remove it, you know, that's fine. The only thing, I think where I was questioning this is, temporary sign that comes up for, oh, you just want to make a statement. It's not an event that's gotten on the ballot, it's just a statement, you know, whatever, you know, I love my chihuahua. Oh, it's Robin's favorite, okay? I love my chihuahuas, a pepper thing, not a ballot, I really love my chihuahua, I want to put it out there, I'm even going to put a picture of a chihuahua. Okay, so how long do we let that stay out there, you know? I mean, do we let it stay out forever? How big, you know, I guess that's where it missed came in, and he had the right to do it, I think he had the right to do it. And actually, people have cutouts in their yard of sea creatures and things like that, so I mean, you could...
Well...
Help me out here. I don't know.
Well, subsection two is, is one of the, this, this goes to a lot of the changes. If it was an existing thing in the code, I didn't change it unless I felt it was necessary. So I think that's been the rule that you've been working with, and if there's a need to change it, then give me some direction on how you want to change it. If it's, if it's, there's not a need, then don't bother with it. Yeah, I could come up with all sorts of hypotheticals about it, but you're, you're giving people some flexibility, and, you know, people may want to put up the, I love a certain kind of dog sign.
Now, over here, we have six square feet for residents, are you going to make that consistent? On page 22, even one. Because that's what we asked this on the next page, was to debate the sign, size. That's the O R L, and then we have 24 square feet on all other districts. Page 23, we've got the common signs for the sizes.
On number two, it's saying for specific, special, one-time events, says sale of property, construction in progress, election or brand opening. So isn't that kind of what we already did? So I would say just keep it consistent, because if we change this number, then it may conflict with the previous 15, right? Is the number in this right? So I would say just 15 across the board.
Right, 15 across the board.
So there's no confusion.
Counsel? I'm not hearing any opposition to that. You all good with 15, then? Fred, does that take care of 22, 23 for you?
Yes.
Okay. Just so you see, and this is where Lynn's gonna really get the last word, but three, Roman numeral I, uh, two, the small Roman numeral two. We have nine feet on that one. So if you're talking eight feet, nine feet, to whatever your pleasure, it doesn't matter, I don't think to us, but we should probably keep that standard. But you'll pick it, Lynn, and, but, you know, eight, nine feet is probably what we're all thinking. Um, if there's no other comments on twenty-three, we move to twenty-four. Fred, you had a comment on twenty-four, that he said subjects should have provided reasonable procedure for removal on all temporary signs. I think I feel it does, so not sure of everybody else's. You good? Okay? Twenty-five? This is where we get to the bottom, we have the temporary political signs. You had two by three, so we're gonna go three by five to keep it consistent, correct? Okay, Robin said yes. Anybody else? I have one issue here. These three. We find the candidate, the homeowner doesn't take out the sign, a political sign? I mean, what are you gonna do with it? Like, somebody just hands onto your sign and sticks it out there? I just think we should just confiscate the sign and not worry about the three dollar fine, because the candidate has a limit to how much they can do. You know, if I give you a campaign sign, somebody gives you a campaign sign, and you don't give it back to me, right? You hide it and stick it out there three weeks later, I mean, that's not my fault. You know, you go around the city, you pick up all your signs, but if somebody sticks one in your garage, you know, do we really need to find them, Lynn?
This is, this is old language, I think.
Yeah. Just take the darn sign if you see it after the election's over and... You want to scratch it?
I don't, I don't want to see the purpose of it. We have for the realtor signs, if we pick them up and bring them in, we contact the realtor, there is a fee for that.
Right. But the political ones, I mean, we're gonna get on the tongue and come and come and pick up the sign, and you know, it's like...
Well, maybe we should.
Sue them. All right, so we'll scratch that, Fred. You all good with that?
What is really defined as a temporary sign?
Uh, it's back to the...
Period to stay there, but the failure to remove that.
Yeah.
Back to twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Pretty much anything but the political signs, you deal with them separately? Have the political signs.
What you, what we define as temporary, consider submit, make notes, permit.
That they need to permit for, though, right? When you go permanent, you need to permit.
You see, I have, I know Mr. Morales has put a lot of time in this, I know you put a lot of time in this, and if you want to throw your order bottles at me, I can understand that, I don't have any code we want to put. This thing's grown into a monster, and I just couldn't support it. I mean, I'm not going to push this, this is just... I think we got more than a lawsuit with twenty-nine pages now than we did when we had like six or eight. I mean, I would be, I would, my three-year-old, the granddaughter's always put stickers on me. I'd be afraid to walk out the door and say, okay, I'm filing a signed one.
That's on a sticker.
I just think this is just out of control.
I think, I mean, it's a lot, but it covers any loopholes that could potentially lead to litigation on board. I did notice on page twenty-one A, going back to permitted temporary signs, the second to the last line, says within forty-eight hours after the culmination of the event, it says sale, election, close of business, special event. Should we get, take out elections, unless that would technically be a political sign? It should be under political sign section?
Yes.
Fred, to your point, I mean, I think you're right, if this is a legal sign, I don't think so. We had a simpler one, and there was a whole lot of issues with it. I mean, to be like a person in our city, I'm not kidding, I don't know, I don't get to go out in the water often, but a person had not long, but multiple signs that covered his roof. They were visible probably from, you know, Dunham. I mean, if I'm that person's neighbor, I'm going like, what the hell? And it wasn't a sign, it was like a banner attached to the roof, and it was like, and okay, guess what? It was my guy, okay, that he was supporting, and that's what, maybe not gonna be my guy next time. It doesn't matter whose guy it is, you know, it's like, wow, you know, we provide ourselves on keeping this community so good. And then, you know, and by the way, it was perfectly within the rules of building it, you know? I mean, because we didn't really cover it. I know this country has to cover everything, and Fred put a tremendous amount of work in it, but I mean, if you don't specify it, then you're gonna get like challenge after challenge, you know? So that's why it gets to be, I agree, it's a big thing.
I understand where you're coming from, and I don't want to be the flying ointment, like, I commend you. I pray to my God to break the heart and hearts of this council and get the city moving. I commend you, Mr. Gaddis, tonight. I mean, I don't want to be the thorn here, but I just gotta speak my mind, I mean, and that's it. I mean, like I said, you put a ton of work in this, and I think it's great. It's just totally confusing. You're an attorney, Leslie's saying, what's he talking about? All right, I understand it. I just don't think the average day, I don't understand.
No, no, you're not, I don't take it that way, I don't think Fred would be there. What I might suggest in this, and Fred's gonna rethink his thought here, but I say, let it come out of committee, we're only one page away, or two pages away from finishing this thing. Let it come out of committee, bring it up. If this gets shot down because we think it's too complex, then we're gonna have to go back and pare it down. But, you know, you pare it down, it will peril, so, you know, you can turn thread loose or a red marker on it, and see what you can cut out of it, but I don't know if that does it, you know, so...
I think it would be helpful, and I hate to ask Fred to have to spend more time on this and cost the city money, but I think it would be beneficial for all of us to see a copy. It's what he thinks is complete, is missing all the comments, all the red, all the yellow. So we can go through and read it without distractions, because it's overwhelming, completely overwhelming. There's, there's, some of it's crystal clear, some of the other places are like, okay, what's going on here? And I think in that format, it'll be easier to digest, just like it is in Medico, and then we go from there. That's a great suggestion.
I agree with that. Can we get through this, though, so we can give him all the comments that we have, at least on this?
I agree, I agree.
No, 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 I'm just saying, no, 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 I'm not taking it that way. Can we get through, we are three pages away from giving him all the comments that we have. We'll basically put this on another session, and then it'll come up for next month or this, or session. And we'll clean, well, he can have that, actually, you can have that clean copy out now. The problem is, we don't really want to be debating this in a public session, you know? Because if everybody has changes, let's say Dave looks at it and says, you know, it's good, but let's get rid of some of these definitions, there's too many. Okay, fine, we can't do that when we put this out, we have to pass it or reject it. So I'm gonna say, just, we're so close to finishing this, finish this up, give him our comments, let him do that comment like Dave said, basically, clean it up, send it back to us, and we'll see you all here in September, and if you like it then, it'll be October, November, and we'll finally pass the sign.
That's fine.
That work for everyone?
Yeah, I agree. I think the comments are necessary, because this, to me, is like a rough draft, ready for approval, and then once we get approval, we can clean it. And then I just think we're...
Jennifer, before we have the comments, I'm just saying, okay, I've already got a copy like this, I want to see a clean copy.
The bill.
So that I can just read it as the citizens are going to see it.
I think you all agree. You good with that? So let's wrap up the next couple pages, Fred, then just basically clean it up, let's have it. You can have it before that session, if you're, you know, not less than you, but if you have it ready, maybe before, whatever, we do a number one session, it's good, we get it on the menu, number one.
That's fine.
Okay. I think on page, on page twenty-five, so basically it's fifteen feet. Lynn, Lynn has said, we're scratching this, then with civil panel, we would just stop, it's not worth it. Anybody have any issues on twenty-six? Twenty-seven? Twenty-eight? Twenty-nine? Anybody have anything that's not in here? I'm almost afraid to ask, but... Okay, Lynn.
I just have to agree with Frank here, I mean, it's insane. Size-wise, you go from a couple pages to a thirty-page law, and it's gotten so descriptive. I think you're endangering running into more people. Every speedway you're out there, we're gonna try and find a loophole in this thing. And you're almost gonna have to do a search to be able to find certain things. During my research for electronic signs, I looked at a lot of sign ornaments for various physical items. Nothing, nothing, assuming it's in scope or size or whatever, it's always a kind of a reason for sizes. I mean, one point seven square miles of a residential community, and this is your, a sign ornament. I mean, it's just kind of, it's a heck of a, that's all I... Are you good with the tactic? Let's wrap it up, and we put it out there, we put it out in the committee, and we put it forward.
One, two, four, and like, it is, this is big, you have to have way into this, it's big, you can go in law. Uh, they'll say, if you remember correctly, lots here. Where did we have our challenge? We had two people in one council said if you come in, one guy was pretty understanding with us, he was writing to them, big time attorney, he was like, you know, we're protecting City of City, but I really don't want it. So we had, and we had a couple people challenge us on this thing, and probably all this stuff that's on our code, this has been most vulnerable.
And it was worked out?
Yeah.
I mean, so it was worked out, and to see a manager handle this without having a thirty-page document as it referred to, who knows, citizens?
You might not need so long in that time, and that's...
Well, I guess my point is just that you, if you're trying to write a voter-proof ordinance to protect against every challenge, I mean, especially if you have a margin this thick sitting on the city manager's desk.
And it's stolen, though.
It's stolen, both of them. Anybody with four hundred dollars can see the city. So, I mean, you just, you can't stop it.
But this will take out the layman people that don't have the constitutional law background to be able to nitpick this. This may avoid a few people from going ahead, if they see this, they're like, oh, that's kind of detailed, never mind, as opposed to two pages that's vague, like, oh, well, even I, as a layperson, can read into this. So I just think this is more of a roadblock, it's not a concrete wall to block, but it's definitely something to speed up along the way. So I think something definitely needs to be done. Because another thing is, we, with that one case, yes, we worked it out, it was very, but we also kind of suspended our sign ornaments and didn't have any rules, so it was kind of a free-for-all. So every time somebody comes up and challenges, we can suspend our ornaments until we fix it, so we can try.
So we had two questions in how many years, and during the period, we suspended the sign ornaments. What happened? I mean, it wasn't Dodge City out there, from my recollection of the events. I mean, I didn't see billboards going up in residential areas, I didn't see, you know, flashing signs on Twenty-Second Street, or Eighth Street, or wherever. I mean, I'll be trying to solve the problem, it hasn't really existed, but I'm just throwing it out there. Thanks.
That was a comment, I mean, the question's how to cook, if the detail is here now, so the question's what we want to do with it. Uh, Fred, if you, if you're gonna go through it again, if you see something that you think that says optional, or maybe it would be cut? We have at least one more discussion of this thing, and we have some time to do it. And if it's too unwieldy, then fine, we'll cut it. But I mean, if we reject this, we have to still, no sign ornaments being enforced, and we have to go back to the drawing board all over again, so we were working on this for a while now, so... But if you have a, I mean, listen to your suggestions, obviously, if you see something, you say, you really don't need this, then make it optional, you don't want it blown out.
I tried to change as little as possible, believe it or not. I also looked at other cities and looked at the ways in which they put in material that's at the front end of the whole code scheme. And the object of doing that was to lay a foundation that would be defensible in court, so that you could say, we as a city made every conceivable and reasonable effort to explain what the basis of was for the standards that we're putting in place. And that, I know, took up a lot of room. I mean, for me, I, you know, the amount of space is not really the value and the relevance, but what it counts is the legal standards. So the legal standards, I tried to, uh, put in based on the feedback that I got from the city council. And my hope with this is that if you do enact this as it's basically written, that if you ever have a challenge, you will be able to, in court, say, look at this, from these provisions, we did everything we could to lay a foundation for the standards that we put in place, and the standards that we put in place are consistent with our desire to have an aesthetic community that's not cluttered up with a whole bunch of signs. That's, that's the argument that I think you need to be able to make.
Thank you. All valid points. All I'm going to end with then is, how much time have we put into this? One, the orders? How many council sessions, how many work, how many man-hours, how many billable hours have we put into this thing to withstand Supreme Court challenges that may or may never come? And to a more priority thing, we've spent hours discussing this thing over and over again, and we are about to go into the budget session, and we will, but we will, we will spend a fraction of the time on our actual budget, which is realistically hundreds of thousands of dollars. And instead, we wrapped around the axle on a Supreme Court challenge that may or may never come. So I'll leave with that, it's putting it into a realistic perspective.
Or get reversed. Supreme Court challenge, they could change their mind, and there's a report.
And you could also question the hours. So, you know what? There's, the thing on is proactive lawyering, which is to avoid the lawsuit. And it's, and there's these really pharmaceuticals to keep you out of the lawsuit. You don't want to win Supreme Court, like, in taking all of the Supreme Court, because at that point, we're hemorrhaging money. And even if you're not, if your insurance company is, you'll be hemorrhaging it on the next bill, which is the part of it. So, just the point. We could do whatever we want, those are anything up to us, but I do think we should pass the sign ordinance for the next couple of months. Any other comments on that? I didn't ask for citizens, is there any citizen comments? I'll close it. Then, item three, this budget workshop, we officially went to twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Please turn the budget strictly by city management, we just hope you all have our copies, and that will turn it over to the ladies.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, we pretty much went through the budget. There were some, a couple of things that, uh, we went back and changed, and then there was a question about the generator. And I provided you a copy of the quote we got from Sabat Power Systems. So, we, at the last works, or last meeting, we decided, or the council decided to keep the code enforcement in-house, or not in-house, contracted. That will increase the code enforcement budget by about thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars, give or take. We set it up for twenty hours a week, totals fifty-two thousand dollars, decreased the staff cost of thirty-nine, six-twenty. And we increased the audiovisual, that came in at six thousand dollars more than what we had already put in the, uh... more than what we had already put in the, the, uh, budget, we put thirty, came in at thirty-six. So, that, uh, those are the real changes in the budget, there's six hundred dollars more insurance in the Marina Fund, and today, I got the insurance bill for next year, and we've got about a forty-one hundred dollar increase in that, so I'll have to increase that. Uh, I guess the last question is, what do you want to do with the generator? Do you want to move it forward? Uh, that would increase the budget by about a hundred and sixty thousand for next year, if you want to go and purchase it in next year's, uh, budget. Currently, we're using two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of reserve, so that would increase that to, uh, around sixty, be right at three hundred and eighty thousand.
And we have to agree here, and we're gonna get eight hundred, forty thousand, and two, I just was, spent two hours going through this with Leadus Cities, but, um, I saw you like, you didn't email ironically on the same day I was in the course, we're gonna get like half of that, I know, right up front, coming up real soon, so is, are we figuring that into our budget? I know it's really important. We have a lot of different things, so.
Well, really, for us, the only thing that's for is really stormwater, that's the only, we, because what the money's supposed to be used for, broadband, I don't think the city's, has a broadband broadband, it's not a rural area. Uh, stormwater is the predominant thing that we can use it for, so that could help us with our projects. Uh, the state told me last week, uh, right after I sent, or right before I sent that email out to kind of give you an update, because our number increased from seven, six-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand to eight-hundred-and-two thousand. So, the first, uh, number, we're gonna get four hundred and one thousand dollars, uh, but it's gonna have to be focused for us, I think, on stormwater projects, which will help us, because there's a stormwater project in next year's budget, capital budget, and that's part of this reserve we'll take back, so we're gonna benefit from that. When we're gonna get that money at this point? I don't have a firm date, they said they were gonna send us the agreement, uh, they told me, if I didn't receive it by today, to send them an email, I sent them an email, because it did not come in, uh, and I've reached out to a couple of the other communities, they haven't got their agreement yet either, so.
If you have difficulty dealing with these people, one of the benefits of attending this thing was, those people were active, so I've got numbers, I've got emails if necessary, um, Leadus Cities has this too, Leadus Cities actually has an advisor for this, so if anybody's kind of giving you the runaround, or anything that you need, we can get that money, because there, there's people who are, that's all they're doing is getting that money for people, so.
So, uh, no, I have the contacts, and they, they have, you know, when I'm sending them an email, typically they respond back, so I, I haven't got any issues with that. Uh, at this point, uh, really, you can't really, as an example, if the money comes in before September thirtieth, technically, it's in this year's budget, the current year budget. Uh, if it doesn't come till after October first, then we're gonna have to go back and amend this budget. And that money is not set up in this budget, okay, till, till I knew we had it, there's, there's no, uh, and realistically, everything I understand about it, we can put the money and stick in the bank, call it pennies on interest, but we can do that, because it's, it's actually cash, there are reports that we're gonna have to make to the state, uh...
You do have to spend it.
Oh, we, we have to spend it.
And you have to spend it, I think it's twenty-twenty-six is the ultimate date of spend, and it gets spent if you're gonna have.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Yeah, yeah, for, but, the first...
No, I'm sorry, I'm, no, I was right, it's a period of performance check, including like, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, it's twenty-twenty-six.
Well, maybe they've changed it, but what they sent us was twenty-four.
Just so you know, I mean, I, I think you're pretty much right with what you said in terms of infrastructure, that's probably where it's gonna lie here, what they recommended is that we include our citizens in any discussions before we spend this money, just to give you some, and probably most of this doesn't apply to our city, okay, but, um, and this is a Leadus Cities slide, they're gonna send it out to us, but respond to negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, aid to impacted industries, we can even give incentives to people for vaccines and stuff like that, premium pay to workers performing essential work, provision of government services to extend reduction in collective revenues, and then make necessary infrastructure investments, water, sewer, or broadband, so, and that, this is just a summary slide, apparently there's like a website that has all the information, so.
Right, there is.
You know, there's a lot of stuff that, that we might be able to do, or we'll probably wind up, I'm guessing, running with any of this stuff.
Well, I, I mean, that's what we've been trying to do, is get the infrastructure cleaned up for the city, and, uh, this amount of money could take care of probably three, three years of projects, so, uh, but we'll get an agreement, and once we get that agreement, we'll have to get it signed, and then we'll go forward with sending the money to the bank.
Right.
Uh, Hagan City got the agreement today, I read the whole thing this afternoon, and it's very, it's, it's what you'd expect from the federal government, it's, you know, very detailed, the parameters of, of what you can use it for, I think, about two pages, uh, one of the principal things that I, I know, because I know Hagan City's likely to use it for, yes, is water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And then, there, there's also, the twenty-twenty-six is the correct ending of it, and the, the thing that I would expect, based on having read the, the document, is you'll, you'll probably get it before the end of the week, and then you, you should approve it by resolution in September, and my expectation would be, you, you in all likelihood will not receive the funds, uh, right away, I'm, I'm sure you would not get them till October, and you're only going to get half the funds anyway.
Right.
The second half will come a year later, so that's, that's really what I would expect.
That's what I heard, and I don't think they're gonna get it since September thirty, but I know we do have to approve it, they, I might have to sign it, or so, the council has to approve it, and then I sign it, but there has, it has, there's a document that has to be signed, and...
In Hagan City, this was a question that came up today, and I specifically told them, based on what I read in the, the agreement, you should do it as a formal resolution, so you have a resolution that you can hand to them to show them you did this through, through the proper process.
Then, as to the, uh, two hundred thousand, I, I just, I just can't live with that, it's too much money, you know, I, I, I understand it, maybe that's what it costs to generate, you know how to generate for this entire building, I guess my question is, do we really need it for the whole building? You know, if we were in a position where we're gonna be without power for a period of time, you know, can we somehow, what, you know, the office is the key here, um, and keep that running, but do we have to have, I mean, if we're gonna use this, let's say, as a cooling station, or a rest station for people who didn't have it, that, that makes sense to me. But if this, if we're just having a, you know, air conditioning, a hall, like, we're not in, and I mean, we can hold, in a tragedy, in a horrible thing, we can hold a council meeting on a pile of rubble if we had to. So, I mean, I don't know that we need to have this all lit up and usable, you know, when the others, when the citizens are, you know, maybe without power for weeks on end, so, and I think they voted up last time, so, and other generator companies and stuff, I, I saw that number, and I'm like, yikes, that's, that's just a chunk of change, and if we could maybe just do a piece of it, it just, it just doesn't seem necessary to me that we have to do this at this point, and for something that really doesn't happen very often, you know, maybe it's not for all.
Is this about, this, is this about the same cost as what our five-year plan was?
Yeah, it, it is.
Okay, so, I, I think it wasn't, the suggestion wasn't to just jump on it immediately, or I thought it was to advance it to a two-year plan, so we just follow half of it, one year, and then the next year, that way, we've got it much faster. But the purpose of, of the entire building is so, for the people that are on this side of the bridge, and they are without power, and they can't go anywhere, this is a safe haven for them, because it's a large room, uh, we've got the hallways, it serves as an emergency shelter, I see no reason why it couldn't, uh, and that's why it's imperative to, to keep the building powered up. And as far as the offices go, well, uh, people are going to be here, someone, someone's gonna have to, if, if, if people are here, I'm sure that somebody on this council and the staff are going to be in this building during, during a crisis, is that, is that?
We were last time.
Okay, so, so, I'm the type of for keeping the whole building hot, you know, energized, um, but if it doesn't seem, if, if everyone else is thinking that's too much for one year, um, hey, let's space it out and get it done faster, because we are sitting on a pile of cash that's reserved specifically for a disaster, and what disaster are we going to, what are we gonna do with that money if disaster occurs? We're gonna clean up our streets and repair government facilities, right?
Right.
So, um, I don't know, it, it just seems to me like it, it's a no-brainer, if that's what we're reserving the money for. Um, one year, two years, uh, I don't want to wait five. Uh, the, uh, it, it was a whole gaggle of people over there that were upset about the sign, and they specifically called out, why haven't you bought a generator? Why aren't you keeping this, this building open during emergencies? They spoke, and I, I listened, and, and I think, I think it should happen.
Okay, I, I, you know, I'd agree with that, and I think you're right on that, but history, last time, we didn't keep this building open. This building had power, Speedmore, for a bunch of people that didn't have power, senior citizens on the other side of town, I believe, they brought into this building, and then returned away, and so was me. And we had air conditioners, and when this room was open, they could cool here, this is not shelter, okay? And they, and it wasn't using, I remember when we replaced the last hurricane, I remember looking at that sign, and I said to the city manager, I said, if this happens again, you can put up to a hundred and forty people in here, and I agree, and if we're gonna do that, then count me totally behind this generator, okay? This isn't a shelter, I don't think it's, it's watertight, safe, that we can use it as an actual escape shelter, you gotta get off the island. But after you get back on the island, you find that the power's not gonna come on for two weeks, like what happened the last time, um, then if we happen to have the air conditioning here, or we're lucky enough to have a generator, then during the day, we could set up chairs, and people can come here and cool down, instead of staying in their country, pretty house, so if we can do that, you got my vote. But how many, uh, did you go out for bids on this?
Well, this is, uh, I believe this one's off a state contract, so we would still have to go out to bid, uh, but this is a good starting point, and I was estimating by the time we bought it, five years from now, it would cost us somewhere in this range. Uh, they did tell us that the, the, uh, wire costs had went up dramatically, and that's why the increase, because the, the cost we got, uh, a year and a half ago, was like two hundred and ten thousand dollars, so it's went up twenty-five thousand in that short time period.
I agree with, uh, both sides of this thing, and I think the way you cut the Gordian knot here is, you need to come up with a needs assessment, we need to go into our disaster emergency plan, and what are the expectations? In the event of emergency, how many people are you gonna sleep over here? What kind of food preparation do you have? What electronics needs do you have? I, I'm not quite sure that goes to just power and everything, I, I see the wisdom there, but I think it's incumbent upon us to come up with a needs assessment or statement, what is it we're really planning to do with this building in the event of an emergency? What are the expectations? Is that, what services are we gonna provide, and what power are we gonna need? If you look at any ship, any airplane, they all have essential emergency buses on them, so that, you know, you can start load shedding, power requirements, and your downtime, just the essential lights you have, the essential heat or cooling you need, the essential electronics you have, and I think we need to start thinking about, in, in those kinds of terms, rather than just, hey, let's flip the switch and turn on all the lights in the air conditioning, so.
Well, we, we wouldn't stay here anyway, we, we would, uh, the emergency, this, myself and the staff would go, uh, and our first place is, uh, St. Jerome's Catholic Church, and that's, that's where we have our EWC at. If it's expected to be further, it's the, uh, Indian Rocks, uh, is it Baptist, Patty? You know which one, I don't remember. Then we move further inland to, but that, that's how we operate right now. We would leave the island, just like we did last time, uh, and then come back when, you know, the, the, they let us back on the island. Of course, I came, came back in the last time, that morning after the hurricane, so staff comes back to do evaluation, and then the sheriff finally left people back on the island, I think it was like five o'clock that night, firemen, right?
Four-thirty. Four-thirty, I remember well.
Okay. But we were here, you know, since seven o'clock in the morning, and we pushed some things out of the streets, and, uh, of course, they had to get our little light poles off the bridge, but, uh...
And, no, I understand all of that, but, you know, you got the events leading up to the event, you got the event, and then you got the post-event recovery kind of stuff. And so while people may be coming home, they may be coming home to no power, or whatever, and how long is that gonna last? And then, maybe what kind of services or assistance might be provided for the community center, so, you know, I'm happy to take this offline and kind of come up with some scenarios and some different alternatives, so.
Glenn, to your point, I think it's an excellent one, I think we do have to have that plan, because you know, now, now you've got me thinking about it, yeah, it's great, yeah, we're open, well, you could conceivably have fifteen hundred people in this city, and we hold a hundred and forty, so what are we gonna do? You can't have people lining up, and then they're gonna say, you know, what's the parameters? How long do I get to stay? Or one, you know, do I get an hour, two hours? So, I mean, I, I, to your point, I do think that this is all worth handling, and what are we gonna do? What's the expectation? And if the expectation is we're gonna use this, then sure, I think it makes all the sense in the world, empower the whole thing up, and this becomes something that, instead of the city sees us spending two hundred thousand dollars to maybe keep an office going, which the office is vital, don't get me wrong, you know, that's the nerve center, if we're putting the city back together, but we're spending two hundred thousand dollars, we're also willing to save for the citizens, and two hundred thousand dollars also to be able to have a spot, where even on a rotational basis, you don't have power, you're gonna be able to come in there, cool down, even if it's for a couple hours, you know, to me, talking to citizens here and there, can't really much argue with it.
That's whenever, uh, whenever that last one came through, uh, it was, it was whenever I was in the process of buying my home that I have now, and, uh, we were temporarily housed in a condo during the transition period, uh, power went out, it was out for a week, and it was hot, and there was no way to cook, most people didn't have gas in their, their, uh, their condos, and the safe haven for everyone was that they would take a break, get out of the heat, walk over to the community center, where three gentlemen had brought in generators, kept them running, and they had cook stove, they had a refrigerator, they had basically all the necessities that were, that were needed, uh, to, to help people, to give them some relief. And I see no reason at all why we shouldn't, we shouldn't be able to offer that as, uh, as a service to the community that we love so much.
Now, if anyone could disagree with that, and I mean, to your point, we had power, because we happened to be off Main, um, the, the, the Boulevard, three, so I came back at four-thirty, my power was on, I think at seven-thirty. None of my neighbors, except for one of my next neighbors, had it. We ran extension cords from our house across the street into their house, so they could run fans, at least just to cool off and stuff, do a little bit, have a little bit of light, having one light... Do a little bit, have a little bit of light. Having one light, I went without in Hurricane Sandy for two weeks up in New Jersey, having no light in two weeks in a row, didn't really get chapped for a while. Um, so, yeah, I mean, what Dave just said, if you come in here for two hours, that's great. But of course, when that puts a burden in on you on top of, yeah, you gotta get the city back together. So you're not having unlimited staff, you've got five people. So I, I kind of claim, we need to kind of think this through as to what we wanna do and how it's gonna be run because. We don't want, you know, a thousand people banging on your doors and I don't want any, so.
Again, you know, there is an overarching consideration here. There is. And we've heard from residents that this isn't priority. So I think we need to be thinking in terms of stepping up the acquisition of an emergency generator in here. I mean, we can size it appropriately and do that, but I think we need to start budgeting money and he's, he's been doing that. So, right, at this point, I think the consensus is getting done within this budget cycle and the next budget cycle?
So if that's the case, then we would need to increase this budget cycle based on this number. Because right now, that's what I'd probably use. Uh, because we'll have with, what's in the current budget right now, we'll have eighty thousand. So we would probably need to increase it forty more thousand this year. Or let, let me say, in budget year twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the next year, if we wanted to buy it that year, the budget for that year would be a hundred and twenty thousand at this point.
A little bit of consensus, I know I saw Jim's hand up, but I, I, I would agree with going forward with it, just with the proviso that we also develop concurrently. The plan for however many, because I think that really does give us the, you know, we can set money aside, but when we actually go out to purchase it, what do we really need? It's gonna be dependent.
But if we go with the existing number and plan it over two years, that gives us time to figure out the right size for this. If you lay in the budget, if we decide two hundred thousand is the right number, we're on track for it. If we decide it's less, we've already got money in the bank and ready to.
Right, so if, if we wanna split it over two years, I'd recommend that we add another forty to this year's current budget. That would mean we'd set aside eighty and we'll then next fiscal year, which is twenty-two, twenty-three. We would either plan to buy, spend the rest, or set aside the rest of the money to buy a new generator in that year.
Or we already have the money there, we can lower trigger if we want to.
And you're not gonna, you're not gonna be dipping into the P E F I issue because Uncle Sam's giving you four hundred thousand plus dollars, so. We're, I mean, we should have the money to pretty much what we need to get done this year and next, so. If you're gonna do it, it seems to me this is for you, okay? You're not gonna miss it, that's what I'm saying, for sure. So is the extra forty is not gonna matter because you're not gonna pull anything from the reserves here, even though you have it, you're really not gonna.
Well, technically, you know, if we wanna move our.
Budget for it down, you have to.
Yeah, so in the, in the current budget that we proposed, we are gonna pull money from the reserves because we don't have any money from.
Right. With the intent to backfill the emergency.
They, they got you.
So what we do then is I'll add an additional forty, so our reserve amount would be about two hundred and seventy, we're looking for at this point.
The citizen comments, that would be our consensus.
Do we, do we have a natural gas coming in this building?
Yes. And we put that in here two years ago, something like that.
All right.
Jim Henssboy, Seventh Street. Um, a couple things. We had talked before about buying power. Cities turning up with other cities and buying through them, these bigger cities. Have we tried that?
What did you say, buy with other cities?
Buy through other cities. So say the county contracts and we could hop on one of their contracts and purchase one. Have we tried that and, and throw this state money?
Yes, if there's a state contract and, and I'm not positive, but this, there is, I. My recollection, but that's a couple years, three, four years ago, there was a state contract for Generac, generators in the state. So, or if another city's purchased a generator, typically you can piggyback off of them if it's like to like, so.
So, so we're gonna research that? And the second thing is I caution the city, because working with emergency management, like I have in the past. Uh, we cannot say this is an emergency shelter, not necessarily a classified under the state. So we can, we are not, as it stands now, we are not a shelter. We can make this a cooling area. But I caution us as to how we label it. I think we need to do our homework on that before we make any statements. Um, for the city's sake on that. Also, you talk about cooking. I mean, we don't have the cooking facilities here. So if, if we don't address that and whatever Mr. Khan is going to research, I think that could be, come up in a problem. The other thing I recommend is if you're gonna do a cooling station, just do it the hours that city employees are here. That way, it's monitored. But anytime we do an emergency shelter, you have to have some kind of medical staff here, police, they're gonna be searched then. I, and we're not certified.
I, I don't think anybody's looking for the designation as an emergency shelter. We're just looking to provide comfort and relief services post.
And that's, yeah, but Mr. Gaddis had said that originally, and so I just wanna make sure that we, we title it in the correct manner we should title it.
Except now I said that we have to leave. I, I'm, I'm gonna make sure this is crystal clear. If there is a flood, there's, there's a hurricane, you need to leave the island.
Yeah, and that's, and, yeah, and that's, that's what you're.
Police open up the bridge, then we might talk about using this. And if, yes, it would be more a cooling station. No one's gonna stay overnight here. That's not what we're intending.
And, and that's probably what it should say in the wording is after the fact.
I don't think there is any wording at this time.
Well, no, he's gonna, he's gonna try to put together some wording, so I'm just bringing that up for Mr. Glenn's.
It was, it, this was never even meant to be a shelter. And I don't think that's what the discussion was. I think it was more. These are, these are all hypotheticals that I'm trying to find good uses for our money and to provide a service to the citizens.
I think we're all looking the same way, Frank.
You, um, you did bring up something that I got me thinking. I built my house. This is one home call. Well, their water gas, because they, I'm, I'm, they do it for residential. I'm not sure what they would do for us, but there's always incentives to add more gas appliances. They like that kind of stuff, so. And they have incentives for this. They have incentives for hot water heaters and gas lines and everything else, so there may be some type of incentive for generators. I don't know.
No, there's not.
There is not. There you go. Thank you.
I got a free radio on meter. Yeah, that's, that's what you get. They pay, you know, they charge you for taking the line. We've already got that. We've always taken care of that. We have tankless water here, so, uh, but there's no.
They, they give you a breakdown of what the, what the generators, the cost, um, the labor. Because it, it just seems awful high to me, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's, uh, I can tell you from previous experience in another city where I put in three of these generators. This is, the price is, is not, even the one at two-ten for the hundred and fifty K W was not bad. So, uh, heck for your house, you're paying about, did you just get one? I think it was about fifteen grand, maybe closer to twenty. It's, it's a big deal to put one in.
You could, you could buy a Cummins, uh, hundred fifty, eight hundred, eight hundred amp, I think, for around forty thousand dollars generally. Now you gotta hook it up, obviously, you know, in the same.
And the switch and, yeah, the wiring and.
That's, that's not gonna run up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
But the most expensive, uh, portion of it was the plumbing. And then running the electrical through a heavy conduit and the, and the wire itself was the uncheat.
Well, yeah, it, it isn't because you're doing six and four gate wire, but, um.
And, and it would go out to bed anyway once we do it. And we're, we're talking a hundred and fifty kilowatt where mine was twenty-two, so it's, it's quite a bit larger. I, I, I don't know if this is accurate pricing or not, but like he says, we have to go out to bid anyway.
So consensus to move forward on the generator, the budget, right? Okay, it's just the budget, we're not spending it here. And, um, and then the changes that we did, so I think we're ready for. Next presentation is the real one, that's in front of the, uh, citizens' first approval, right?
Right, at least, uh, September eighth is the first, uh, budget hearing. At this point, I'm still recommending leaving the electric as it is. We've got an opportunity to do a few additional things in the city and I think that's, uh, it's costing the. Uh, I think I've calculated it's costing the average, where it's been about seven dollars a year, I'm saying average.
As total tax?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I was, you know, hard attack. I thought that was a tax increase because that's, you didn't pay that much usually, it's seven B O K.
No, the tax increase is, uh, for the additional funding to use. That is my favorite. I, I hit it for myself. It's eighty-seven thousand five hundred and ten dollars and that's based on the value increase, which was seven point six percent this year. So that's where we're at.
Do you have anything else on the budget that you need from us?
Nope. Um, you'll get a, uh, in the next package, you'll get the memo for the first budget hearing. It'll, it'll talk about the changes and setting the military. Second budget hearing is on the twentieth of September, third Monday, five oh five. So we can go to the five oh five club afterwards.
Go to the workshop afterwards.
But, uh, that will be two resolutions passed and other than Frank, I think everybody's been through that before.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Do you have any general business, making out of the agenda?
I would, one thing I will tell you, we got our preliminary CRS verification visit rating. And we maintained the six, which is a good thing, uh, because I was concerned that we, they changed some things. We don't have streams here, but. We're able to get, uh, some extra points joining the, uh, public information group that, that county. And, uh, kudos to R B for participating in that because we needed a resident and he volunteered. Uh, and Kyle did a heck of a job in creating maps for me and doing some other things, so. I think it was a good effort and we ended up, uh, previously, we had two thousand forty-two points and the new one, we have twenty-one hundred and seventy points. So we, we keep two thousand, so, uh, that's a good thing and that takes effect and it's for five years. We just have to do verification each year.
And the council meeting is September sixth, is it?
Eighth.
Eight, okay.
Can't be on the Tuesday night all day. Well, can't be on Tuesday because of this, uh, county commission meets.
Awesome. Okay. Sorry folks, um, it's Patty Timtry and, uh, Fred Riley need you for five minutes. I gotta. Just so you know, we have a vague record request that has been made. I'm trying to attempt to answer it and I can't do it because they're not specific. So I need to see you if you're ready to tell me what we can do, because Patty has to answer the other half of it, so, um, so we can find minutes to score this third one. Other than that, um, motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? All right, thanks folks.